I'm going to call an order the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 School Board Workshop, 3:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I mean the Moment of Silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's earthly light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, as they burst forth into the night, that our flag was still there? Oh, say, do not sad stars spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Please be seated. Okay, we'll move to roll call.
Do you want me to start?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, I am Sally Hunt and I am here.
Kristi Chong.
Colleen, did you want to chime in?
Colleen Conklin present by phone.
Wolfery present?
Ashakamora.
Okay, and so we have our proclamations and special announcements, strategic plan spotlight. Then we're going to move to, I think we have minutes. Okay, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chair, we do have one recommendation that we move 9.04, the Advent MOU, to right after public comment.
Okay. Okay, we will do that and make that change. So then we will move on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment today?
Yes, Janelle Chan.
Welcome.
Hi. My goodness, seems like every meeting lately, one of you guys have been missing.
Well, I just had a request, and that is for new business, I was asking, wanted to put out there, I was going to ask you, for one of you, and I'm sorry Cheryl's not here because it would be nice if it, I don't know which one of you are going to respond to this, but I was going to ask, since we're at an agenda meeting, that one of you can maybe talk about the idea of when can it be put on the agenda for a vote, for the, when it's going to be voted on for the evening, public comment, free speech, as I call it. And of course, I call it free speech because as I've mentioned before, we are in a crisis in this country of free speech. And on a federal level, whenever there is a problem, you can look all the way back and trace it to the local level, and that's where it first starts. And not only that, but one thing I wanted to stress is we have three brand-new board members, and when we lose Conklin, Dr. Conklin, we might even have four. And it does take iron to sharpen iron, as you know. And when we, when you have the public before you, you're going to be challenged, as you know. And in the evening, that's going to be a challenge. You're going to be able to manage it, you will. They're, they're going to challenge you when they get up there, and it's going to hone you. You're going to develop in a way that's going to make you very, very good. And they're going to be your constituents, and they're going to be speaking freely. And you're going to be able to do this and do this well. And I just want to encourage you to let them get up there, speak freely. There are going to be people coming that can't make it here. The evening meeting at the end doesn't work. Emails don't work either. I mean, all you get a return is thank you for sending an email. I would never email you guys. I've emailed you guys once, knowing that FOIA request means that an email is going to get twisted around. So to protect you guys, I don't email you. So emailing is not an option either. So anyway, like I say, under new business, I hope one of you will respond to, when can this be on the agenda to be voted for with all the board members present? And openly and transparently, not, not in a secret retreat. Thank you very much.
And just to respond to that-
Please don't respond to it, because that's inappropriate and it's against the rules.
Well, no, we're just, we, we are, just for the information for the public and the board, that we already had agreed to bring this back to the agenda, and we were hopeful to bring it today. But because we weren't going to have all board members in attendance, we've decided now to move that to our next-
It's on the 416 agenda.
So it will be, it already is in, to be there, to be discussed, okay? And the, so now, any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would like to come forward now? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we will move 9.04 Advent MOU next. So Mr. Willihan and Ms. Rizzo, welcome.
Yeah, good.
Sorry, come on up, I'm sorry, just read the names that were on my list.
Yes.
And yes.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent. We're here to present for workshop, a letter of intent to extend the MOU agreement with Advent Health. That the agreement originally was for three years, which will end July 1st of this year. So Advent has a letter of intent to extend it for another two years.
Okay. Any, any questions in regards to that extension agreement?
Yep.
Is, it was my understanding is, is we were, we had this place, it knew it was expiring, and then it was going to be, it was kind of on a, on a month-to-month basis, is that?
No, this is the MOU, so you're referring to our health clinic?
Oh, to the clinic, okay, gotcha. This is just our, the MOU that encompasses all of that.
So this is the athletic trainer portion and the agreement with Flagler County Education Foundation in terms of the classroom to careers and mental health support.
Okay, got it, all right.
And I, I think the original agreement contract was a total of three years with one-year, two one-year renewables, before we would have to revisit the, the contract agreement. So we are, we are extending that, we'd like to take on that one-year option, and then we'll probably end up doing this again per contract next year.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Teresa Rizzo is good with that.
All right, thank you very much.
We thank Advent Health for our continued support.
We love it. This has been a, a great partnership, it has grown. I think the last time I was here and presented a lot of the successes, and this has become the benchmark partnership amongst our central Florida counties. So kudos to you guys for, for all that you do and for supporting us.
And can we share a little bit about our physicals that's coming up?
Yep.
Just for the public?
I always hate this opportunity.
We want to get those slots filled.
So one of our deliverables in our partnership is to provide an inclusive, all-access physical opportunity for all students within Flagler County schools. And so that goes to student athletes, ROTC members, band members, firefighting academies, anyone that needs a physical to participate in school activities, especially sports. So this opportunity is something that we've been delivering in small quantities over the years. When our partnership became official, we opened up the doors, and, and this is our third year holding it as a mass event, a large mass event. It's two nights, it's going to be May 15th and May 16th, and it's held at Flagler Palm Coast High School. They have one of our larger facilities in, in the district and have been gracious enough to host us. We have the opportunity for about 450 student athletes to register each night, so close to 900. Our goal is to hit about 660, which is about 60% of your student athlete population, which is about 1,100, give or take. So right now, we are a little over 200, and we still have about a month and a half away before this event. So we are excited. The Flagler Palm Coast High School has supported us from, takes about 60 to 70 volunteers, clinical and non-clinical, to run the event. And so we're excited about it. So they can register, students are asked to register so that we can manage flow, so that it's not like a, a large busload coming at one time, that we can space them out. So the website is fsportsphysicals.com, fsportsphysicals.com. You can go there, follow the instructions, register, you'll get a confirmation email. And we will take walk-ins, but we try to get everyone registered so we can improve the flow. So excited about this opportunity. And on top of that, we will be providing free ECG screenings at this event. Last year, we did about 300 screenings. We know we can do more. And we had, between Volusian and Flagler County, we had 38 flagged results. 38 were, excuse me, yeah, 38 flag results. Of those five were red flagged, which are a high risk. And one of those students was from Seabreeze High School or neighboring county that ended up having open-heart surgery to save his life from a congenital issue that wouldn't have been identified unless he had an ECG screen. So it's very simple, it's free, not invasive, 10 minutes or less screening, and the results are evaluated by pediatric cardiologists to give a little bit of peace of mind to parents, coaches, and the athletes themselves as they participate. So excited about offering that and looking forward to continuing conversations about ECG screenings.
And information about those physicals will be on the school district website and also the Education Foundation website and social media as well.
Thank you very much.
You know, that was my follow-up question, so yeah, thank you. You might have said this, my apologies. What student ages are there?
I didn't, I forgot to say that. It's sixth grade through 12th grade. So those students that are going in the sixth to 12th, middle school, high school. And this is, all students are at Flagler Palm Coast for this event. So the event is just being hosted there, it's not just for Flagler Palm Coast students.
Perfect, thank you.
Just to be clear.
All right, thank you very much, we very appreciate it. Okay, so now we will move on to finance.
Good afternoon, Chairman Furry, Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. We have a nice walked out, Carrie Whitmore. I have Abby Brock. She is our new purchasing coordinator who has replaced Chris. I just wanted to bring her up so you all could meet her and just give her the opportunity to just give a few sentences about her background.
Good afternoon. I am a product of Flagler County Schools. I graduated in 2001, so it's great to be back. I spent the past year and a half at Embry-Riddle managing about 650 of their university contracts. Before that, I was at Early Learning Coalition for two years. And I, in 2022, finished my PhD in philosophy, and I'm looking forward to being here with Patty and Carrie.
She has already jumped in, just got things started, and setting up meetings with the schools, with bookkeepers, with school admin, and we look forward to seeing what she can bring us and help us out with.
That's what we like to hear, welcome to the team.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Now, the stuff rings over, it's okay.
I can go back?
Yes.
Okay, so we will start off with 7.01, Approval of Imagine Charter, School Finances. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to Approval of Purchased Orders Over $10,000. Any questions regarding this agenda item? Okay, so no questions there. So we will move on to Vendor Payments. Do we have any questions on vendor payments? Okay. And we also have deletion of inventory, 7.04. Any questions on that? Okay. And just so the public knows, we, we, these are posted to our, to our, our online account, which is Board Docs, which is publicly facing, and anybody from the public can also log in and see these slides ahead of our meetings, and we review these ahead of time. So we don't always have questions unless something really stands out. 7.05, Request for Approval of Financial Budget Amendments. Any questions here? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.06, Approval for Professional Development and Travel. Okay, seeing none, we will move to 7.07, Request for District Financial Statement. Any specific questions or, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, that's a very open note. I did attach the legal services to date. Even though these financials are only through February, I wanted to make sure you had the most up-to-date information after our last accounts payable run last week. So the attachment of legal services is as of March 31st. Sniffin and Spelman, which is the outside counsel for districts. To date, we pulled a $30,000 PO for them to date. Through March, they have spent $5,646. And we pulled a $9,000 PO for Weiss and Sirota. And through March 31st, they have spent $2,430. This PO report that I have created for these two POs will continue to be shown on a monthly basis with the district financials.
Okay, so just to be clear, so Sniffin, of the 30,000 PO, we've spent $5,646?
Correct. So the amount that I've highlighted, it's labeled as liquidated. That is the amount that we have spent to date out of the total PO.
Okay.
And those will continue to come up as we get additional in.
As- As we continue to get additional invoices?
Invoices.
Yeah, like we had mentioned last month, Ms. Mustaro had asked, we just didn't pay any, we hadn't gotten the invoices yet. March was the first month that we started to pay them. I didn't want to wait until next month when March financials are presented. So I will always present the most updated data on these services. So you all have them in front of you on a monthly basis, which was the request from the board.
Okay, and this is a reminder to the public is that, the reason why we're, we're monitoring this here is we're evaluating the structure of our legal services going forward and how that's going to look, whether it's in-house, contract like we're doing now, or a combination of both. So we're just looking at all the data so we can make an informed decision when that time comes.
And just to be clear, these were estimates as to what we wanted to make the PO. Just because Weiss and Sirota is 9,000 doesn't mean we stop at 9,000. It all depends on the services needed. This is the first time we've been in this situation, so I just want to make that clear, that it's not that we only have $6,500 left, it depends on the services that are needed by the board.
Got you, thank you for that clarification.
I just have something real quick for Superintendent Moore. From a timing perspective, we are April 2nd, and I, someone shared feedback at a previous meeting about staff being so accustomed to having an in-house attorney just to, you know, have right there. So we're at the beginning of April, school is ending right in, in the next couple of months. It seems to me like this, you know, because of school ending, like we're okay to kind of keep monitoring this without it having a huge impact on your operations.
Yeah, we, for the district side, staff, we are evaluating if we, what, if we were to come to you as a board and request in-house, what would that look like? What are the things that we would be looking for? Why is that a request? What areas are we asking for support that we feel like would be better serviced if it was in-house? So we're really evaluating all of that, but I'm confident in the current structure that we have, that the two firms that we currently have with us, they have been able to meet our needs right now, and I don't foresee that changing immediately. But we are evaluating that to identify, not just what we have, but what would it look like if we were to go in a different direction?
Is, do you have an, is it like by July, or, you know, for you to be-
For me and mine, I've said by the end of April, really to be able to identify what are our next steps, so that we can begin working on it, because we do not foresee it being something that will just be, oh, let's bring it to the board in May, and it's done, and we're hiring somebody in June, so we know it's going to be a process.
There's a process, yeah, okay. But you feel, we're in a good place.
We're in a good place right now.
Thank you.
And I think it's really because of the two firms that we have, how they collaborate together in order to ensure that the needs are met for the board and the needs are met for the, for the district. And that's what we're working through, really right now. What things are board-specific and what things are district-specific. And I think that's important for us to get our, our grounding on that, so that when we do, or if we do, decide to go back with an in-house, we can still keep those lines very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, thank you, Ms. Hunt. All right, so there, any other questions for Ms. Wormick regarding finance?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move to Academic Servitude, Mr. Jeff Reeves.
And I thank you, Ms. Reeves, for being ready. I told them, I said, guys, we've got a lot on our agenda. You know you're coming up, just be moving, don't wait for the chair to call you. So thank you for setting the tone.
Think of his radio.
So he's got overnight travel.
Yep, four members, Superintendent Moore. Number six before you, you have seven field trips. These are all through the summer for our students. There's about 140 students going all over the place. Three for future problem solvers, international competitions, we're excited for that. Two for our JRTC programs, one for SGA from FPC, and one athletic trip for a summer camp. Those are the seven student field trips before you today. Any questions for those?
I guess I'll just ask one real quick. Patty, sorry. When we do field trips and such, what pot of gold does that come out of?
It should be stated on the Board Docs.
I, I don't remember.
So, so mostly it's fundraising?
Okay.
Correct, yeah. Sometimes it has internal accounts, but mostly fundraising.
Yeah, and all of these, before they go to Board Docs, I do review them to ensure that it was, it is a trip that was, if it's coming out in general, which very, very few come out, that we budget it for them. Majority of them come from the organization of the club fundraising, some of them are also for cost.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I, you know, as we're like, again, looking at places to be efficient, it's like, do we need to start staying at La Quinta? You know what I mean? But if it's like coming out of fundraising dollars, like, all good.
Absolutely, all right.
Thank you, sir.
So that's 9.1, 9.02, before you is Solution Tree. Just going to remind you, last year, about this time, we were, Ms. Moore had referred to me for working with Solution Tree for professional learning communities we were looking to establish. And so last year, we began this journey, and we established some days in June and for our staff in January to, for that professional learning community to understand how to problem solve, process analysis, those kind of pieces. In addition, we provided support for principals and APs throughout the year, and we're continuing that journey, as it were. And so we have some days we set aside in June. But this trip in particular, because it's overnight, I wanted to bring it before the board, let you know. And it's for a PLC Institute, a training for our admin- And it's for a PLC Institute, training for our administrators' teams from our high schools and our elementary and middle schools. And it's in Tampa. And this opportunity is September sixteenth through the eighteenth. And one of the things that we're doing to try and harness and maximize energy, effort, and efficiency is, in our June tenth date for our initiation teams, lead teams for our schools, partly it'd be about professional learning, the back of the day is about student, the school improvement plans, making this meaningful and working through the process. So they take their data information, develop their school improvement plan, and then pivot to look to this event. There's almost three hundred different modules and trainings provided to find out how they can incorporate what their plan is specifically, now they can align that to their need. So try to be really focused in the energy and effort for that. And this is paid through a grant through federal programs. Any questions for that?
I was going to ask, is this a requirement or is this something like we're choosing to do to help?
Strongly encouraging, as, as we make this a priority for Superintendent, as her vision is to see our schools and leadership teams growing professionally and to be problem solvers inside their house, to look at data and now analyze data and then make decisions based on the data to help improve student performance.
But we got a grant, so that's awesome.
That's correct. Absolutely. We have a lot of grants. Ms. York and I work on that, so.
I have something real quick, related, unrelated. When you talked about overnight, it just made me think of something. And this might be a thing for Bob, real quick. Sorry, I just love doing this to you guys. I'm sorry. Like a year ago, we were having conversations about background checks for like overnights and whatnot. And there were maybe some hiccups. Like, are we really just back on track and doing really what we need to be doing with background checks on volunteers, overnight visits, all of that? I know that's not, that's a student topic, not teacher, but it made me think of it.
Yes, the answer is yes. I mean, all our employees, without a doubt, before you get hired, and then as far as our
Parents.
Volunteers and, and basically the two levels of volunteer background check, you won't be going on a, a, a field trip, whether it's overnight or not.
And some of the parents are actually employees.
Which works out great.
Which works out great.
And I want to just highlight the Ed Foundation. And Teresa, maybe you know the amount, but this year, really focusing on that, making sure everyone has the appropriate level of clearance, the Ed Foundation did partner with the school district in a, in a different way in order to cover the costs for additional background screenings for our reading pals
Correct.
program. And so, um, do you remember the amount? I know it was
Mr. Reeves, my doggy mouth.
So, so It's a few thousand dollars. It's
It was significant.
It was a significant dollar figure. And I really appreciate Ms. Rizzo, because we was on the fly. And I said, hey, do we have a moment? And we did. And we kind of found our way to yes, to help make sure that the proper background checks were in place for our reading pals. And we could not have done it without the partnership with Ed Foundation.
Well, thank you. So if we were to have an operational audit come right now, requesting documents, ensuring that we are doing background checks, we would
Yes.
pass that well. Okay. Sorry, again, related, unrelated, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Okay, so we are now going to move on to operational services, ten point zero one, right?
Oh, no, no.
Nope.
Nine point zero three.
Oh, nine point oh, I apologize. I
That's okay.
You got it mixed up with the MOU.
Yes, I did. I apologize. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Moore, Chairman Furry, and school board members. Thanks for having me today. I'm here before you, our contract with Florida Virtual School for the franchise agreement for our district virtual program, F-Blader, is up for renewal. So I'm requesting that we move forward with renewal. They have a one-year option or a three-year option. We've opted into the three-year option the last three years, just to save time. So I'm requesting that we approve another three-year option. And this is for our secondary, sixth through twelfth grade. It's, it services the curriculum in addition to like a, a management system that helps ensure academic integrity, communication, in, in addition to the curriculum.
Excellent. Any questions regarding to this? Okay. Then I think we are good with that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move on to operational services, ten point zero one, acceptance of the Florida Inventory of Schools, known as FISH. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Chair Furry, Board, Superintendent Moore. I will be going through, we have between Dave and I, all four of them. But we'll, but we'll let you know when we're going through each one. So the first one is before you is the acceptance of the Florida Inventory, known as FISH. This is done annually by Plant Services. And every five year, every five years, DOE will verify measuring each space in person. And that will happen next year. They will physically come down. There's about eight of us between them and us, and we physically go around and measure each room. And between those, it is just a verification that Plant Services verifies and signs off, and you all bring it to you. The changes from last year to this year, we had added eighty-two student stations. And that was from the build-out at FPC Building Seven, where we had the three classrooms. And we split them up into six classrooms. That increased our student station. And then we also removed portables that were still on the FISH report at Belter, some Racket Club, and Corp. One. Those did not have any student stations. That would just, was the square footage overall for the district. Is there any questions?
I'm looking this up. Anybody else? Okay. Then next, yeah?
Yes. The next is the project priority list. We submitted through DOE, and this is the SPOT Survey five point six. I brought this before you all on November twenty-eighth. And the SPOT Survey was then approved by DOE on December seventh. This is step two of that process of utilizing the DOE, excuse me, the CO and DS funds. And again, the project Building Seven at FPC, where we split them in classrooms, that was one of the projects. And the other project is at FPC Building One, the weight room, the floor. Over probably the last six or seven years, it crumbles from them dropping the weights. So we're fixing that, but we're also taking the opportunity to, we got with the school, and we're taking down some walls and opening that up to be able to use that space better for, for the school. And again, that is, this is just the step, the second part of using the CO and DS funds that we have to follow through DOE.
Okay. I'm sorry, the letters are tiny. Is that two point five million dollars in numbers? On the first page. Just want to make sure I'm seeing it right here.
One here.
Okay, so that, that would be the overall, when we're doing SPOT surveys, there's a lot listed in there. And that is the estimated amount. If, if we were to do all of that work, then that would be the, the amount that we have for CO and DS funds, roughly somewhere around four hundred and sixty to five hundred thousand. So we use that money and try to, we do some projects that we have listed in the SPOT Survey to try to do that each year. So we're not spending two point five. Wish we got that much from them. That would be awesome.
So when we do a SPOT survey, we list all the potential projects. And then however much money we get each year, we can knock off some of those items.
Correct. It just helps us with this step of getting the money, then having to do the SPOT survey. The SPOT survey's already been done through you all and DOE. And it just helps us do it a little quicker.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. So for ready to move on, we'll go to ten point zero three.
All right. Good afternoon, Board, Board Chair, Superintendent Moore. I wanted to provide a, a short update on the Old Kings easement. We have continued to work and coordinate with our developer. Developer has provided us with an estimate for the, our property at Old Kings and for what that square footage would be. We continue to work on the construction agreement and the easement purchase agreement. And our plan is to bring those documents back to the Information Board Meeting to you with Chris Wilson, our attorney. He'll be calling in to answer any questions that you might have on those documents. Well, as soon as those documents get revised, I will send them to you, so you'll have a chance to, to look at them. The, the developer has decided to do a directional boring instead of a open cut, which we were very concerned about because that would impede the, you know, the flow of traffic coming in. And so there, if they do a directional boring, there will be no surface damage to the parking lot. So at this time, when, as soon as we get those documents, I'll send them to you. And then we'll bring them to the Information Board Meeting, and then we'd like to bring them to the six, six PM Board Meeting for approval.
So that, from the last time that we, this was presented, the, the lines where that work was going to be done was not very clear on where that landed on our property. And now that, that, that line, from my understanding, has, is a little more invasive into the
It is.
It, it, on our park, actually in the parking lot area. And I know that in some discussions, we're just concerned about that disruption. So you're saying that they, they would literally be drilling underneath
Yes, sir.
the driveway?
The hallway.
The hallway?
That's what we're being told. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have
Is this going to be done for school starts and school?
That's what we have listed in our documents, that it would, needs to be done over school, over, over summer. It, it's a lot less invasive now than doing an open cut. We absolutely could not do it anytime but summer. But if they, if they start it this summer and then they have to finish it up maybe over some holidays, then, I mean, I would think we could be agreeable. We could be agreeable to that.
And that is the reason why it is coming before the bore at the one o'clock and the six o'clock in order for it to be enough time for them to prepare to do the work immediately over summer.
Well, I, I would just like to make sure that this method, that we have kind of a full understanding. I mean, in theory, it sounds better, right? But I, I, I just wanted to see, are there, are there, what are the instances where during this process that they, if they ran into a barrier underground or something like that, that they would have to cut into the parking lot as it was originally proposed, right? So that, that there are some contingencies. If, if that should happen, you know, who would be responsible for those type of remedies, repairs? And, and what that would look like, so.
And that's why even though they're doing a directional bore, we still are trying to have them do it in the summer. So in the event that, let's say they hit the waterline, that it's during the summertime and it still allows us to at least that, to be repaired and fixed.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's an example of one of my concerns, something like that.
We hope that does not happen.
Right, of course.
Well, but then that, because that was kind of where my mind went, is can school function? Like with, if it's, if it's going to be fifty percent of the parking lot, but we technically can make things work with the other fifty. I just, we live in a world now where this project was supposed to take two months and, and like six months later, right? It's like still happening. So that kind of, to the point of contingency plans and the what-ifs, can because I don't understand this in the way that you guys do, but could Old Kings still function if this work was still being done, if things don't go to plan?
The directional bore option, yes. Because you, above surface, we would not see anything. There would be no impact to the parking lot, to the school, to anything, because where they would, basically is going down in the ground, underneath, go. They stay underneath, underground the whole way, and then it pops up on the other side. So there would be no impact to the school and/or the driving of that. However, we would still want it done in the summer in the event that things don't go well and they hit something, that we would at least be able to have that repaired prior to school starting.
Yeah, just, I just want to clearly understand how that works, because if I look at, I, I've seen this done recently because of, there's new internet providers coming through right now, and they're coming down streets. And they are, they have this machine that kind of forces, you know
High-pressure water.
Right, however it works. But there, there are sections where it meets, they dig somewhere, right? And then they, they meet at that point, and then they go again. So if that's, if it's similar to that, there would have to be some, it may not be, but I'm saying that's the closest thing I've seen in my, in my own personal experience, that there were these sections where it had to get to some point and then continue from that spot. So if that's the case, we're going to make clear that if they're going to, if they would have to dig in those areas there, or if they can just run it straight across. They may have that technology. I don't know.
Yeah.
Mr., I'm sorry.
We, we still need to meet with the contractor.
Because this sounds like it's relatively new information that, that you got.
We're supposed to, we have asked to schedule a meeting with the contractor even before they brought this proposal, Mr. Freeman and I. So we're still planning on to make sure that we understand what is the scope of work, what is the plan, so that we know what that is.
Did they give us a window of time of how long it would take? A week, two weeks?
That's one of the things that we need to
Yeah.
We are continuing that process so that we can bring it on the sixteenth. And if we don't have that information by the sixteenth, then it's going to have to be pushed out. But they want to get it done, and we want to help them out as much as we can, so we're looking at bringing it.
Is it Mr. Delaney's firm, who, do we, who do we have who's looking over this from a legal standpoint?
We use Chris Wilson.
Oh, okay, so he's the one who's looking over, of course. You, I knew that for the contracts. I guess when you talk about like going under, then it's like, well, what if in two years, the integrity is now bad and like this collapses? Like, you know what I mean? Like, is that now an expense for us? Like, there's just like a whole lot here that's making me a little nervous.
When they're gone, they're gone, right? And then we pick up the pieces where, at that point, so.
I am personally nervous. Just if one little thing goes wrong, that, you know, it'll be a big deal.
And it, and it's interesting, looking at the diagram, that, you know, it, it literally comes, goes under us, and then, then across the street. And I still don't understand why they couldn't just go straight across the street and then down, you know? So that's still, you know, part of that.
Yeah, when, when I've come back on the, on the, on the sixteenth, I'll have a diagram, a better diagram, that shows you what they have provided for us. It's basically an overlay of the school and where the lines are, are going to go. And Mr. Wilson, he does easements for Orange County schools, so he's well familiar with the, the process and the agreements. So we, since we use him for concurrency and that is kind of his specialty, we are using him for the easement.
Uh, just one final thing. I, I've already kind of said it, but I mean, I know as one board member, I would feel better if we have, if I know that you guys have looked at all of the what-ifs and, you know, what if everything went wrong? And I, you know, Dave, I appreciate you saying like, we want to be a good community partner. And I'm all for being a good community partner. I just want to make sure it's not at the expense of the detriment of the schools. So just know anxious woman over here wants to make sure we're thinking of everything that could happen with it, so.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
So then we'll move on to ten point zero four. This is easement for, at Matanzas High School, FPL easement.
So I bring before you a request for an addition to the FPL easement at Matanzas High School. I brought this to you and you all approved on November twenty-eighth. And this was the original easement. I just wanted you all to see this was what had already been approved. Go to the next one, please. And so FPL is asking for this hundred feet by fifteen feet, right there where it says L-one, L-two, L-three. And the reason for that is, is coming across Matanzas Wood Parkway, the original easement had it coming across at an angle. And they needed, they needed to come straight across Matanzas Wood Parkway. So they're asking for this additional easement, adding on to what we had already given them. So they would come across, hit that spot, and then follow the path that they normally were going to follow prior. We just need to bring this back to you all for that additional easement, as we brought the easement, the original one.
And really, by doing it, just, the benefit all comes our way. It seems like it's, it's, we're not really, there's no real consequence to us for that. That land runs right across, along the roadway.
It's the right-of-way.
It's the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
Nothing that we would use for anything of significance.
No, sir. That's right up against the Matanzas Wood Parkway.
Where it says Pirate Nation, that's where the school is? Three, three, where it says the address? It's hard for me to picture this.
Yeah, it is. Maybe if the Yeah, it is, but maybe if they give some perspective of, of that, is that the driveway in that, to the?
No, this is actually facing north and so you're looking at Matanzas Wood Parkway and the school is down south of.
I can show you.
It's like way far.
Can you go back to the, the first one that you were looking at and scroll, scroll, keep going? Okay, then it's the, another, the other attachment. I apologize. And gets the Matanzas High School FPL easement, maybe the very last one? Click on the very last one. Okay, no, the one before that. There's a colored one, I believe it, try the next, the W, yes, sir. Okay, there we go. So this was the Matanzas Parkway. This is how they had showed it coming across, straight across, but that's not how it ended. And then you should be able to scroll down. Okay, right there. So when you're coming down the service road where the buses come in off of Matanzas Wood Parkway, that's that road to your left, you have the football field and everything again to your left still. And to the right, scroll down one more. So that is going where the bus parking, where the buses go in park. That's the bus loop right, right there. Does that, that kinda get you close, sort of?
And the only change is actually, but though, at the road.
That's right.
Everything else is, is the same down line.
Yes, sir. Yes, nothing changes other than just that we're actually giving 100 more feet for them to come across and then follow that same path.
Any other questions in regards to the easement? Okay, then we'll move on to 10.05. Thank you, John. Mr. Whitson.
Chairman Fury, members of the board, Mr. Moore. Another proportionate share mitigation agreement.
All right.
This is a development that's happening basically towards Matanzas High School up in that area. It's 200 single family homes. As we've done with the others, we don't have the middle school and high school capacity. So that's where the proportionate share mitigation's gonna fall mainly on the developer to pay. That would be 27 students. The total development should generate 44 students. So out of that, they're gonna mitigate 27. And there's a map in there and it's the usual agreement. And there's a typographical error in the parcel description, so I've gotta change an O to a zero. So everything else is good to go. Any questions?
Okay, so there's Matanzas, so on the way north side of that.
Yes, sir. If you look at the map here, it's highlighted in the area that's attached to the agreement. And the, the application that I received said it was close to Lakeview and Laramie, but I actually looked at the map, it's closer to actually Lakeview and London. So in the L part.
Now, were these, were these some of the, I don't know if you know, but I'm just curious. Were these some of the parcels that were, that were part of the former golf course that are being converted?
I think so, yeah. I think they're selling off pieces up there, yes.
Gotcha, okay. And is this, do you know if it's gonna be a, like a gated type community or?
I don't know that level.
HOA type of thing?
I don't know that level of detail. We'd be happy to find out.
I'm just curious, cause you know, when, as the builders build more, you know, communities with amenities and that typically is one that has an HOA, you know, kinda like Grand Reserve that out in Bonnell now. You know, I see these type of properties potentially attracting families because they have, you know, amenities that, that are, so again, the more we see of that is potentially a sign that we might start seeing more of the younger ones.
Absolutely. And again, I, I will be happy to check with the Palm Coast staff. I know when I was doing city management, I would always ask about that because from a city point of view, you don't want the roads and the drainage system to fall back on you after the developer leaves and make up money. So you want the people there to be able to take care of it and maintain it. That would include amenities, stormwater, roads, those things.
Yeah, and I, I, as I've kind of followed some of this, it seems that, you know, because of what it costs for infrastructure these days, those type of communities are more attractive because they can, they can actually provide a more affordable house on a, on a smaller lot than the typical larger lot that Palm Coast info lots typically have been. To recreate that would create a much more expensive basis for the lot, for the buyer driving up the price.
Yeah, absolutely. All that gets rolled into the bottom lines.
Right, okay. Very good. Any questions for this?
I have just one thing while you're, while you and Superintendent Moore are both here. Something that I was not aware of, and we've all received the emails, but we have a situation where we've got some students who are kind of well on the perimeter, like the outside. It seems like a Flagler County, right? Which is, there was at least one instance we're being emailed about where a student in the, the ride time. Is, is Flagler, so if a student lives within the boundaries of Flagler County, wherever that might be, we would then be responsible, of course, for educating them and providing transportation if they're outside of two miles or whatever from their school. A mile and a half. Are we, like as, as these, all these new areas are being developed, are we kind of long-term set up for the, the bus topic? Cause that's kind of wreaking havoc, it seems. Right, so that's just what kind of comes up as we're talking about this, the almighty transportation conversation.
You're, you're exactly correct and I'll speak to a little piece of that and then Mister Freeman can speak to the rest. But every development that comes through, I see it. Whether it's in Palm Coast, whether it's in Bonnell, the county. And they're tired of hearing me say, hey, where's the bus stop? And how are you configuring it in a way where the bus doesn't have to go all the way into the subdivision and therefore, you know, risk safety and the fuel and all of that kind of thing? So they're used to hearing me say that. And in fact, the city of Palm Coast, to their credit, is going to incorporate that very comment into their standard checklist.
Okay, good.
So that's gonna get covered more and more. We have some, a few other situations to clean up, but I know Dave has some answers on some other things that that would raise as well, so.
Some of our areas that we have that are very on the extreme limits, we have to look at our routing and make sure that we meet the Florida statute, which is, it is 60 minutes for most students and then it can go up to 90 minutes is what we can't break by Florida statute. We can't break that, that limit of 90 minutes on the bus.
And so it's 90 minutes on the bus. I think one of the emails I read, it was like, but school starts at this time. So it's not like from the time I leave my house to when school starts. It's the time on my, on the bus.
That's the way that I understand it. I don't know, I need to confirm that with our transportation director. I know that he, I saw the same email, that he is, was responding back to that individual and.
And he is looking at also other options as we're seeing additional options come up that are allowed for us to receive our, our funding. So he's looking at van services and those things that we definitely are looking at.
We can't take like a whole bus, that becomes inefficient.
We could take a smaller vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
It's because there are several, we, we're in, there are several places that we're kind of working through students that are in extreme areas and so we're trying to route them efficiently.
Yeah.
And to that regard, I will say that the new software that we're working with the school transportation uses AI technology. So we're gonna be able to, you know, get the most efficiency out of it and so we, you know, we're working on that.
We are transitioning to a new routing software for this summer. And so we, we anticipate that helping us with, with the routing. And as Ms. Moore had mentioned, our, our vans that we have, we have those elementary school vans. We are in the process of putting DVRs and cameras on those vans so that we can look at some of these longer areas. One of the areas is Hunter's Ridge area, which is way down the very southern tip of the county that we're getting information from the developers that they're gonna start moving.
Right, I remember that coming up, yeah.
Really quickly with that. And so we're, we're looking, well, how do we transport them and get them here's most efficiently, so.
And in, in extreme cases, we make agreements with our surrounding counties in order to have an agreement that the students would be able to go to school in their county.
I assume the family has to.
Yeah, cause we're right there on the border.
And I saw that with this one particular student, I saw if there was another school close by. But I would assume that that family has to be amendable to that. Like if they live in Flagler County, I assume they, we, they have to.
There are a lot of things that go into that, capacity, all of those things for that, that particular district. But Mister Walker, Mister Freeman, Mister Whitson, they're working through that with several different.
Like I know when I say things, it's like, I know you guys are thinking of everything.
We're not always, but so we, we appreciate you guys bringing it up so that we can share with the public that we are addressing and, and the gentleman that, you know, has been emailing and helping to hold us accountable in that area, we do appreciate that as well. Because it is helping us to look at different options. I mean, some school districts use ride share as, as options. And so we are looking at more options than just transporting students on a, on a school bus.
And we're, matter of fact, we're meeting with Fallujah County to just look at what our options are for the Hunter's Ridge area, to see if that's a potential option for the future. So, you know, no matter where, what we do, what the board directs us, where we wanna go, we wanna be able to present that information to the board to, okay, how do you want us to solve this?
And we'll have all of the rules thought out, okay, here, option A, option B, option C, taking into account all the moving pieces.
So my only other thing with this piece, cause I think it's somewhat related, something that I brought before, I really believe in. You know, something I brought up before is I live right by Wadsworth Elementary, zoned for ramp fire. And I just, like, as part of this conversation, I just really wish we could look at zoning and having as much as possible, students going to school where they live, like kind of their neighborhood school. So I know that's a whole thing, but I just, I just think that's, I just think that's good for students to go to school where they.
I don't know who you're talking about, but I do know another family and just based on the family dynamics and everything, that child will have to go from Hunter's Ridge to here. So I mean, I would like to see if there is something we could work out for those kids that are way out there. It's such a long way to them.
Well, that's another topic. It's like buildings and where our schools are.
It's about 15 miles from Hunter's Ridge, the closest elementary school, so it's quite a, and that's not a direct route.
To Flagler, you mean, cause they pass pathways.
Yes, yes, right. To a Flagler school, yes, ma'am.
And you know, as, as we're, as these new communities are, are starting to come out and especially as, you know, we expand more westerly, cause that appears to be the plan to go, is that, you know, we get smarter on what bus stop looks like, you know? Cause what I've noticed is that kids, they're, they're drawn to the edge of the curb, right there at the road, right? That they, I don't care how much space you have in between, they wanna stand right at the edge of the road and that's the most dangerous place to be. And so, you know, what, what kind of, I had this like envision of almost like a, at some point, like a, a turn lane into a community that also has like a, an island buffer from the main road and has a little indent that a bus could pull into, but also would serve a dual use maybe for the community. But when the bus comes in, and that just keeps a, a larger buffer from the main road so the students just could be safer. And even possibly looking at doing, you know, a pocket park or something near a bus stop or, or something like that. I've seen that in other communities where they put these pocket parks throughout, you know, and they're just, they're little micro parks. And that would attract the kids to be more over there rather than, you know, just doing nothing.
And you have all the parents accumulating there and then you have what, what it rains and then, you know, the time of day with the lighting and it begins, the expenses for all of this begin to mount up. And what I'm trying to do is just plant the flag, okay? Let's make sure we think about this, put it in the right place. And then, you know, we're, we're gonna have to have some further conversations about what the standards are for those places, you know, do, what is the minimum that a developer could get away with?
And also, I, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, that, that, I, I think that's something that can be marketed as an amenity to a community. If, if it is a, a community that likely is gonna attract children, I, I would, as a parent, say, wow, that's, you have a safe bus stop already built into the community? That's a place I wouldn't wanna buy. So the developers might look at that and the builders might say, you know, that might be a, a positive addition that we'd like to add as an amenity to our communities, but maybe they just didn't think of it. So just some food for thought as you're having these conversations.
Well, and I love that you just said all that because something that Mayor Alvin has talked about is that really Flagler County specific, well, I guess it'd be specifically Palm Coast, right? Like the median age is kind of higher than, than what we would want it at. And so it seems to me like Flagler Schools, as far as being a community partner, those types of things I think are such a help to city council, to Mayor Alvin, to kind of come in with that student lens to say, this is what's needed. You know, and it's gonna attract families, cause they're looking to see, you know, the, the bike paths certainly and all of those things, but also safety and security from a student perspective.
Yeah, and when you go to like many of these new developments like at St. John, I mean, it's clear they're looking to attract, they have water parks in, inside their communities, right? These are not just a, a community pool. So it, it's definitely a draw there, so just again, one more conversation to put out there, so.
We've, we've kept you here a long time.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, in regards to the transportation time, right? Cause I know that we, like we were talking about earlier, the transportation issue that need to be resolved with those students who are taking a long time to get from one place to the other. Do we have a time limit on when those issues will be resolved? Like for example, is there something in statute or in policy that says the situation would be rectified within X number of days?
Not that I am aware of and as far as, you know, if this family were to even say that they wanted to go through a process to notify the state, like we have been actively working on it. Do, do we need to have a date of this is when it will be resolved? Yes, but, and we are actively working to address it by getting, you know, the, the vans and getting the cameras and the, all the equipment that needs to be on those, those vans in order to, to be, have that as an option. You know, at the start of this, you know, our vans were at elementary school. So it's bringing them back in, identifying a, a white fleet process, identifying a process for, for vans and how they're gonna be utilized and all of that. So he, our team has been actively working on it, especially Mister Walker.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and I, I have no doubt, but I'm just wondering for parents and students to find, who find themselves in that situation, if it's reasonable for us to look at a timeline, you know, basically an expectation of when those situations will be resolved.
We'll follow up on that one in particular and get a timeline for that and address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parklitt. Any other questions regarding what we was talking about here?
Share mitigation for Lakeview Estates.
Okay, so it looks like we're, we're done with that one, so thank you very much.
Appreciate for all the extra time, appreciate it.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to human resources, 11.01. Insurance rates for next year and current financial status of the self-insurance. Mr. Olat.
Shannon Mason with us.
We're.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Moore.
Are we combining 11.01 and 18?
It's our request that we combine so that there's so much interrelation between what we have going on with our self-insurance and our wellness center that we have this.
So this is addressing 11.01 and 18.01 if you are okay with that?
18.01, yeah, we can consolidate those, yes.
And board, as you recall, we're having multiple discussions across workshops. And board, as you recall, we're having multiple discussions across workshops as we try to get to a point to provide you as much information as possible so that, one, you can make an informed decision on the recommendations of the insurance committee regarding our health plans. And as per our last discussions, the change, the only significant change in providers from last year is the change that we've recommended from quantum to community cost, and we had that discussion at the last workshop. In addition to that decision, the decision would also move forward, and it's somewhat interrelated regarding cost as far as whether or not the RFP, under the recommendation of the insurance committee, for a wellness center for the vendor would be Everside. So, that's kind of the baseline of where we are, and I know that we've had significant discussions regarding the finances and where we currently are as far as projections, and I know that, based on our discussions as recently as, you know, today, the good news is, is that our outlook has improved since our last discussions. Sue, most recently, as the report provided by Brown and Brown, that the increase of over our costs for this current year will be eight percent over the current fund. As previously described, we thought it was going to be ten percent, so the, our month-to-month for January and February have greatly improved our outlook. And in addition, we've had discussions regarding the fact that, based on whether or not the board determines where we go as far as the possibility of a health center, the increase for next year could be as much as twelve percent without a wellness center, fourteen percent with a wellness center, that would be based on a repurposed space on our, on one of our campuses or sites, and then a seventeen percent increase if we were looking at a leased space with a wellness center. So, we just wanted to make sure that we came forward with the most current information, and I know that, in addition to that, I'm gonna kinda let Angela kinda share any of the additional details that we've kinda looked at along the way.
Yeah, so just comparing this to the last time we came before you with the budget report, the funding for the plan increasing at twelve percent, that was previously, if we were to fund it at that much, I'm sorry, the fourteen percent, that includes having a health center, and previously, we were looking at a fourteen percent increase in the funding without a health center. So, that just kind of shows you where, how far we've come with having a few months of good claims. If you hop down to slide number nine, or ten, yep, that's good, this, again, just reminds us of where we were in the past in terms of our board increase. We did just want to remind everyone, this is an increase to the contribution from the previous year, this is not the percentage of contribution from the board and employee. So, this is how much it's increasing from the previous year. Sometimes that gets a little bit confusing. So, for example, when we look at board contribution for the employee-only plan, that's at about ninety percent right now, and this is looking at a five percent increase of that contribution. Again, that's much lower for, for example, our family plan, where the board contribution is more towards the twenty percents, but we're looking for a five percent increase in that. If you hop down to the next slide, this is, bless you, this is updated based on the new claims data that shows the board contribution matched with employee contribution. So, if you stick with the gray, the grayed-out parts, that is our current, what our employees are paying for each plan, and with a five percent contribution, you'll see how much that goes up on the second line for each type of plan, so going from HSA down to premium. That increase in contribution from the board would go from five hundred and sixty-two dollars per employee to five hundred and ninety dollars. The three scenarios that are listed out here show us how this will all kind of shake out with regard to the safe harbor rule, which is how much money we need to keep in our self-insurance fund in order to pay for claims for sixty days. Once, if there is a five percent board contribution with a five percent matched employee contribution, we would have an estimated three million dollars in the reserve, and that does meet safe harbor, and then we would have a surplus of one million, and that is with no health center. If you follow that down, if we did a health center in our repurposed space in, within the district, so, for example, repurposing a space in the GSB, we would be looking at an estimated reserve of two point seven million dollars, which does meet safe harbor, and then we would have a surplus of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Even further down, that surplus that we would get if we were to do a leased space, it's just decreasing, and that surplus we would have over the safe harbor is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One thing to mention is that our pharmacy rebates are not included in these numbers, so, and they haven't been, but we can expect, based on the trend from the past year, about a million dollars in pharmacy rebates on top of this. We can't say that that for sure is going to happen every year, but that's what it's trending this past year, given some changes we made to our pharmacy rebate program.
But the cost for those pharmaceuticals are factored in here, but that rebate is not.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So, what will be coming before you in terms of action is the percent that you're contributing toward the plan.
And which tier is the most popular amongst participants?
HSA, I believe.
The cheapest one?
Yep.
And this is, I don't see it up here, this is per pay period, right? The cost?
This is.
But I think I'm remembering it from my own.
This is actually monthly.
So, that's the monthly, not per pay period?
This is monthly, yes.
Even, so, even ten percent isn't really that much of a difference. I mean, per person.
It's, it becomes a large dollar difference when you're looking at the higher-cost premiums. So, for example, for the HSA plan for employee-only, a ten percent increase, you know, they're looking at about six dollars a month, but if you drop down to what that might look like if you have a family plan and you're on premium, you know, that could be another fifty dollars.
Well, a hundred and.
Or a hundred. It just kinda depends on the plan.
A hundred and eighty dollars a month if you're on the high family.
How many people are paying for that, though, though, have an entire family on premium?
We, in terms of family plans altogether, we have about fifty employees on the family plan.
But in the, in different tiers, you're saying, or in the premium tier?
Altogether. That plan, the number of members on that plan has decreased quite drastically.
I guess, what we're trying to say is, who's gonna be impacted the most here, you know?
Most people are employee-only.
Employee-only.
Mm-hmm.
And on the, and on the HSA plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Like, so the least expensive, yeah, which is not a surprise.
If you drop down, if you go to slide number twelve, we can see the exact numbers of folks on the plan. If you look at the first line, you can see enrollment. I had that flipped, I'm sorry, it's employee-only on the standard plan that has the highest enrollment, not the HSA.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so then, thirteen forty-five, fourteen seventy-nine and ten percent. So, yeah, it's over a hundred dollars. It's just, when I look at that, you know, one, we have to make sure that the premiums we're charging are in balance, but as we are going into this potentially health center conversation to vote that in, we don't wanna lose participants based on an increased premium, you know, and that's the balance there, that is very delicate.
Yes.
Does anybody in the room remember twenty nineteen and the impact, what was it, fifteen percent, seventeen percent? Does anybody remember the impact in twenty nineteen to feedback that we got, or, that's where I'm kind of seeing that big, a big increase happening?
So, that question was asked to Danielle, and she explained that the self-funded plan tends to have a wave like that about every five to seven years. I don't know exactly what happened that year, but that's the explanation I've received in terms of trend in these self-funded plans. I believe it also, there was one year prior where there was an increase, but there were then several years without an increase, so, what some districts choose to do is have a minimal increase each year so that increase is expected. Our history has not shown that, it's shown keeping it flat for several years and then having to do a more substantial increase.
What happened back in two thousand nineteen is exactly what we're experiencing now. The insurance committee made a recommendation to not have any increase in the good years in between, which therefore impacted the impact that the employees had to absorb during those two years. From a finance perspective, I would recommend always having an increase, that is the recommendation by a lot of CFOs when I talk to them, just so we don't get faced with the situation that we're being faced with now. Back then, in previous years, as I mentioned to all the board members that we met with today prior to the meeting, the board contributed their five percent, and then the task was to cover the excess with employee premiums without impacting our fund balance. So, there's different variations for what we're presenting to you today, and I think here in this report, whether you wanna go into fund balance or take the same approach as we did last year, but what we saw in two thousand nineteen is exactly what we're seeing now. We did not continue to fund the plan off of employee premiums, district didn't contribute, employees didn't contribute, which is why we're in this same situation, and I would expect it to continue again in another five years.
But that's, but that is actually, and I know there's a lot going on, so I don't wanna necessarily broaden it, and at the same time, I feel like this is the moment in time to get this fixed for the future, this resolved, like, I am concerned about the insurance committee, like, I'm concerned about something that I've talked a lot about, and I don't think I'm a mean person, I just, I have to put the organization first for everybody's well-being, keeping the ship afloat. So, it seems to me like, maybe in the past, there's a bit short-sightedness, right? It's like, well, I don't wanna spend any, as a family, I don't wanna spend any more money than I have to spend this year, right? We're going to Disney this year. And so, like, to what extent is the insurance committee kind of considering a five-year or a ten-year long-term plan, or, and to what extent is it like, what's best for me and my family and my pocketbook right now? And so, I think one of the things Patty, you and I have talked about is, whether it's policy or whatever it needs to be, having, like, operationally or policy-wise, where it just is always an increase. And I'll say one other thing, when I was running, I think this was before we were elected, when I was running, it was that whole thing of the promise of the rebate or the refund, right, that caused quite a big thing. If we could go back in time, right, it might be like, hey, actually, that was promised if it could be, you know, done, but we actually need to hold on to that money to safeguard this program for the next five years. So, it's just in the very short time that I've been in the mix of this, of Flagler Schools, it just seems like this is something, like, I know we have to make a decision now on these specific things, but like, in the process, can we also fix what seems to be a problem for this district? So, I just wanted to throw that lovely piece into the mix.
And I would agree, I mean, in the long term, you know, there's definitely room to add some institutional memory to the insurance committee in writing, perhaps, that can be drawn on when, you know, the meetings occur, because it has been an annual kind of, let's look at the snapshot of where we are and where we're gonna go this fiscal year, for a lot of the times that, you know, the year and a half that I've been a part of the insurance committee, so, absolutely point taken, and, you know, looking back in retrospect, I think a lot of us wish that, you know, we could go back and tell the past insurance committees, hey, let's look at midterm and long-term views, but all we can do is move forward with the insurance committee we have now and fix that.
It is one of those things where you have to absolutely change the mentality. It is very nice to go a couple of years without any increases, that is quickly forgotten the year that you have a large increase.
Yeah.
To your point, Ms. Hunt, the mentality also has to be changed, that because what happened with that payout was, we built our reserves up, now let's give it back to our employees, instead of let's build our reserves up for what could potentially happen, we've already seen it just happen two years ago.
Yeah.
So, it is a mindset change all around. Absolutely agree with exactly what you just said, it just has to really be a whole total change.
Yeah.
Something I just wanted to share with the two of you that came up, cuz we all met individually, that I never really thought about. The, I don't know if it's part of the Affordable Care Act, but the whole, like, twenty-six-year-old and down can be on their parents' insurance. What I, that, I think that piece was maybe not written very well, cuz I think that was intended for, to make sure, you know, young people starting out, to make sure they had health insurance. What I don't know that they factored in is those twenty-two to twenty-six-year-olds who are with a company are now maybe not opting into the company's plan, those young people who are not, you know, needing the higher-cost things, they're maybe on their parents' insurance, and so, like, if we have teachers aged twenty-two to twenty-six, for instance, they may still be on their parents' plan and not participating in this. Am I remembering that correctly?
I believe there are some parameters, though, that if they become employed, or there are some parameters with having to go on your own plan. And I can't, I'm not an expert at it, but there are parameters around staying as independent.
Well, when Danielle talked about it, it almost sounded like, no, like, you could just stay on your parents' plan until you were twenty-six, or, you know, through twenty-six. It'd be interesting to find out, like, what those.
You had said that the majority of our members are employee-only, is that right? The majority of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so you can kinda see that when you go down that first line.
Enrollment on twelve.
You know, one thing that would be helpful is to kind of see, you know, what the real-world comparison is with the health center and a real, actual billing on a similar issue, what that looks like here. Cuz, you know, again, we're, so, let's just say, first of all, what's our most common claim, you know, that we have? Is it just going for a checkup? Is it, is it, you know, son's got a fever, take him in, you know, and then say, okay, so if that person went to a urgent care facility, what our bill looks like, right? And then, what that same bill might look like, cost to us if they came to our health center, right? To get some perspective, because that's really where the health center is going to make the difference, and I just wanna be confident that our membership in our healthcare plan are gonna utilize this, and they feel confident that that, that our center can handle those things, cuz if they feel like, hey, I don't know that they're, you know, equipped for that, you know, they might go somewhere else just because of that reason, and if our average claim is something that's kind of out of the ordinary, just for whatever reason, you know, we need to make sure that we communicate that we can handle that.
And much of this is very dependent, like, we talked about, it's very dependent on educating our staff. The Everside proposal offers more than what we currently get from Advent. So, if you have people who currently use the clinic, it's more about educating our staff to let them know, we can now dispense, or dispense certain prescriptions at the Everside clinic now, we can now do this. There's very many, not very many, but there's limitations that we are facing with now that we won't have to face with in other sort. that we are facing with now that we won't have to face with and other services that we will be able to provide. Again, like we all discussed individually prior to this meeting, it is a huge, a huge thing for educating our employees. That is going to be dependent on this, this whole health center.
We've talked to, not just education, but we've talked about incentivizing also. Like, is that, you know, an aspect of this?
I think there, there has to be, especially out of the gate, there's got to be some driver to change, even if it's, because they, they, the member may like the urgent care. It might be quick, it might be accessible, and they may have gotten to know the doctors there now, you know what I mean? So, again, even though it's not a primary care, they may have gotten used to that type of service. And what's going to change that to make them come to our health clinic, you know?
Actually, one of the main incentives that's built into it is that it's free. So it's no cost for them. They can get all of their needs met at zero cost. So that in itself is, is probably a, a big incentive.
When you say free, you mean no co-pay?
Nothing.
But, but, so if they went to the, right now, that's again, this is kind of the, the comparison I want. So if I'm on our plan now and I go to urgent care, I'm paying my insurance, what do I, what do I have to pay at a pocket?
Yeah.
Other than my premium?
Based on their plan design, they'll, they'll pay their co-pay.
Okay, so it's the co-pay. So basically you're saying.
Or something that may not be covered by. It depends on their plan.
Uh-huh.
And they don't have to pay right now with our current clinic for certain services either, but it's more about, like I mentioned, educating them as to, this is the difference in this wellness center versus what we currently have. Because there's a lot of people, I can guarantee you, that no longer go to the clinic because of certain experiences, or they just prefer convenience or their own doctor. So educating our employees, explaining to them the benefits of it and all the different ways that they can now benefit that weren't available before, is a huge driving force for getting this wellness center off the ground and running in the right direction.
Well, I mean, I could see somebody transitioning from the current clinic that we have and then now coming to the health center. That, that seems like an easier transition, because they're already used to that. And, and we're going to promise a higher level of service than they were getting before. But I'm talking about those that are not using that right now. That's going to be the hardest sell. And we need to have that participation to really, because those are the ones that are actually driving up the cost by going to those options, right? So that's where, where I'm saying the incentive has been, how do you, where do, we have to be able to communicate that, that we're providing something better than the urgent care, right? So.
Absolutely.
That's where my, my concern is. I, I think from clinic to clinic, or to clinic to health center, I think that's going to be an easier sell right out of the gate. But again, it's, 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 when, when we pay out, I guess that's where my still unanswered question is, say, so when they come to us, right, for this one particular item, right? How much do we send the urgent care for that same item? Is it, do we, do we send away $2,000 because they came in to, because they, they got, they had a fever, you know?
So what, what you saw, I guess it was a few months ago now, with, with the health center ROI and the projections, they took all of our current claims to, to get you that data. So, and projected out, if instead, this percentage of people went to the, to the wellness center, instead of running that through urgent care, wherever they went with their claims, this is how much we're going to save you. And so, that's essentially what that projection did. And you'll see when we pull up that slide, when exactly that point in time becomes where we start to see that ROI.
And was that like at a 30% participation level?
That was at a very conservative participation, when, when the data show across the state that there is a higher percentage.
Now, my member's getting jogged now. And then, but then, the, the problem was, is we had no data to see what our participation was with Advent's clinic now. So to know if we even, if we had that or how far we have to go. And that was the unknown.
We, we know about a little over 10% of our members have an appointment at Advent. But we can't see exactly how much of our total insured population. We just don't have that data. It's not available to us. But we know that we have over 100 appointments made monthly, and we've got about 1,200 people on the plan. So.
And how, and how, how many years have we had that going? I mean, more than five, 10?
It's been probably about nine years.
Nine years.
Eight or, eight or nine. Well, let me back up. We went self-insured probably about nine, nine or 10 years ago. The clinic started, I believe, a year, one to two years after. It didn't start right away with the insurance, but it's definitely been more than five years.
And, you know, I, I think quality of service is definitely one of the highest points, benchmarks we have to, to excel in, to, to attract people to use this option. But also, this, this, whatever we do here has got to be aesthetically inviting as well. I mean, this needs to be a place that somebody walks into and, and feels that this is a, this is nice. Like, I want to, I want to, you know, I don't, I don't want them to walk into something that where they feel like, wow, this is like, I guess because it's free, I, I'll accept the way this looks, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, so, I mean, a lot, I, I think a lot of marketing needs to go into this here. It's more than just a great doctor. That's huge. But, you know, if you don't feel comfortable in the environment, you could have the best doctor and they might not even, they might just leave the waiting room, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of this that has to be.
And, and I could speak to just a, a little bit of that from our visit to the clinic that was in, in Lake County, that it was truly a professional doctor's office. And it was, you know, the signage and the layout of, of the entire place was just like you were going into, you know, your doctor's office. And, and I know that that's part of the service that, that Everside does provide, even if, you know, we, we decided that we had a space in-house that we could, we could set up. I mean, the build-out with that is in concert with, you know, Everside and, and their standards from what they already have in existing clinics. So, you know, that would be part of, you know, in some ways, their marketing piece, because, you know, exactly the aesthetics of when you walk through the door. We don't want to put our name on unless, you know, it's a, you know, professional-looking, you know, Flagler Schools Wellness Center, absolutely.
And whether, whether we do it within a, within a repurposed space that we already own, or, you know, outside space that we would rent, do, would we be hiring a contractor to do this here? Or do we have people in-house that could do a build-out for that type of space?
I've only had a brief discussion with, with Dave on this. And there would be some contractor requirements on, on even an in-house build, but not to the extent of, you know, an existing outside, you know, storefront. That would be much more involved, and that's why the cost is much more.
Yeah. Personally, I would favor that model, in-house facility we already own.
Just to share, I know it seems like a huge startup cost, but recently at a work meeting, learning what our operational costs are for primary care with Advent, it's millions of dollars. So we are actually saving a lot of money. This is a very good deal, I feel like.
Can someone speak to the, I keep hearing GSB being thrown around. That makes me not feel good. Are you considering having people come to this area for medical needs?
It's pretty common for counties that have this, this type of setup, that they, they either, they can do them right within their, our county had one in the county building before.
Why not? Yeah. I mean, if I'm, if I'm, I guess if I'm, if I'm sick, I, I just kind of have this idea that I'm going to go to a place where people are sick and kind of fellow wellness people versus like, I've come in to pay my taxes. It just feels weird. And then just the other piece of it for me is just, it's, it's a, healthcare right now in this country is very emotional. We're, we're combined, there's a lot of politics with healthcare. And I just feel like asking, I'm going to speak to, as a woman, asking a woman to come to a political space for healthcare needs just feels icky to me. If, if it's what's, I'm just, that's, that is one perspective.
I thought of this too. And, and I, I, in my mind, this, to me, the GSB would kind of be the, the last resort of the location.
I would hope so, yes.
If that's all we had. But I, I think we really need to put our heads together and look at our assets and our locations and see where that might be best placed. You know, we may at some point have the availability of the, of the gym building at Bel Air Swim and Racquet Club. So that's a, that's a spot that would have to be repurposed for something. That could maybe be a potential enough. So we've got to look at all these locations and, and see what.
Makes sense.
We also want to make sure it's easy to get to.
Easy to get to, yeah.
Something that everybody's aware of and not forgotten off some street.
And there is absolutely, there's a good, better, best kind of looking at where we're doing it.
I just wanted to share my one perspective on it.
And I will.
But yes, I agree. We, we have to make it work. And so, maybe something has to give. And of course, I want to, I'm, you know, I want it to work. I just wanted to share my one thought. Can I ask a quick question? And Ms. Mason?
Yes, I'm Shannon Mason. I'd love, yes, I'd be happy to jump in.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to, maybe you could weigh in on something that has come up in conversation. It made me so nervous when you said that this was no cost, right? Because I went to this point of like bell curve, or whatever you want to call it, where it's like, we promote it, now it's wildly successful. Now, this is no cost. Choo! I might be getting ill. I'm making an appointment, because you spoke when you were here last time about staffing and like, kind of every level up that I'm staffing is certainly an incremental cost. And so, is it like, I get three, you know, some, like, most insurance plans, it's like you get three free, no-cost visits to your doctor for this and then whatever. I just, that's the one thing that came to me is like, is this just free and people can go in unlimited? And what does that mean for, because I think you said at one point, your physicians, your providers can see, it doesn't seem like that many people per day. So you're picking up what I'm laying down. So.
Yeah.
It was a concern.
Good. We do, like, we use that.
Better.
Okay, okay.
What the proposal is for in terms of hours.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. One of the things that we, as a management firm, that you would be hiring to do this, we facilitate, is we look for what we would call frequent flyers.
Yeah.
So, is that the word you, okay, I'm glad, I'm glad I'm using the same term. And we have methodologies in place to make sure, are they coming, maybe there's, you know, another reason, a mental health or a personal reason, or are they truly dealing with a chronic condition management? We do have those individuals who, they are coming in routinely because they're getting labs and they're getting a chronic condition management scenario that's being handled by our providers, that you want that to happen versus the big, you know, high claimant to hit your ER and your hospitalization later. And so, we monitor that really, really closely. But if you have an individual that it's not, it's, it's not medically ethical, that they're just coming in often, we try to take a different approach with them. And we even coach up our providers that perhaps there might be an EAP or another community solution, or something else that would serve them better. And, and try to just look at the patient holistically. And, and I think one of the things that you were talking about too is a little bit around, you know, the care. It starts with, you know, finding the right providers. We would be looking and scouting, you know, the area here. We would involve your team at the level that they'd like to be involved in. Most, a school organization like yours might choose to sit through some interviews with the actual providers and nursing staff and so forth. Making sure they're a cultural fit is going to be so wise to bring those members back into the fold that really want to use the center over and over again. And then they have, you know, extended time with a provider to really get to know them versus maybe seeing different ones in an urgent care environment. I think that that helps drive what we call engagement, more members coming back in time and again. And then the level of services that they can get inside the centers, they can have a full blood draw labs. You often have to go to like a LabCorp or Quest in the community to get that done, but they can get that done in the center, not have to make another trip. They can get often the medications that they're, that they need, especially if they're managing some sort of condition right there on the spot. And, you know, that, and then they have the portals and the apps, and they have the technology at their fingertips. So that all helps in why folks are coming in, even outside the financial parts to what the cost does.
Just convenience of it.
Yes, the convenience. They don't sit in a waiting room. These, you know, our average wait time is five minutes or less.
Wow.
That they come in and out the door in an extended amount of time with the provider. They can see more than one thing even. Sometimes if you go to a provider, I personally experienced this myself, and I say, my knee hurts, and they're, they're trying to treat me for my knee, or think what's going on with my knee. But then I also bring up, boy, I might have trouble sleeping at night. Usually, they would want to make different appointments for the multiple conditions maybe that you have. And in this environment, your provider has that extended time that they can sort of dig in a little bit more into multiple conditions and looking at multiple different solutions for you as a, a whole person. I think that, that drives engagement.
Like a true wellness center.
True wellness.
Which is, I would just love for us to get to a place.
And we're, and we're all about preventing future claimants. And in my modeling, which I did want to mention, Danielle was really good at Brown Brown to provide. She broke out even all the way down to how many provider care visits and claims dollars associated with that, how much associated with urgent and the emergency room, how many with the specialty care inpatient. Every, every category was broken down. And that's what we use to populate our pro forma for the ROI, to provide you with real clear numbers as to what you could expect for savings. And then after we did all that, your Y is Insurance Committee here worked with me and Brown and Brown and said, okay, but we want to even lower that assumption to the very lowest number assumption you could possibly expect coming into your centers. And just to give you the most conservative approach, not use what would be our baseline and not use what would be like a high expectation of utilization. So that way, when we come back future times, year after year, we're going to exceed what we are presenting to you in the form of savings and utilization.
Can you go to the health center one page, just so that they can see what.
While they're pulling that up, just.
Thank you.
And, and Will is doing a good job of like, you know, making sure we're staying on kind of real, like, real world. What's the environment? And so, thyroid is a real common, like, levofthyroxine is, you know, probably sold and I don't know how many pills. So if we can use that as an example, you know, patients have to get their blood drawn frequently to, to make sure that my levels are, we don't need to, whatever. So if, if I'm a Flagler Schools employee, I have a thyroid issue, I need to go get my lab drawn before I meet with the provider. Does that lab draw cost me anything with this clinic? Like, is the, so that, I just go, and it's like, it's no cost.
And to be honest with you, you don't have to make multiple appointments even. You could actually come in, that's the purpose of your visit, and see your provider, get your lab drawn, you know, if it's in range, you know, get your medications and everything in one visit.
Like, I could get my Levo.
Yes.
I get my levofthyroxine there.
You can get a lab draw and your.
Like, I could completely manage my thyroid for no cost by, with this clinic.
Yes.
As an employee.
Now, yes, absolutely. Now, they would make decisions, I mean, I'm not a provider. A provider's always going to be involved in this is to, if there needs to be some specialty care for you, that'd be unique to your scenario. But if it's well managed and we're just, and, and it is a stable condition, the provider, I would think, in most cases, you would be seeing them periodically for your, your, your labs and no cost for that, no cost for your levofthyroxine. And, and you may be meeting with the provider. And you might be talking about other things too, besides the thyroid, all in one visit.
That right there is, that is such a, that is such a stressful thing for me. And everybody's so busy that if I just know I have this, well, to me, that's a great benefit. And so those would be, to your point of the story, those would be the examples. Like, I'm sold if, like, you can just do, be that easy button. And that's my life, right? That's my health. So that, I, thank you. I, I'm talking about that specific example.
I have this question. Are the labs sent out or they'll be run in the clinic?
So that's a really good question. There's, there's certain labs that we can do as quick draws inside the center. If it, as I was speaking, I was even thinking it myself, is if it is a full panel, like a 28-panel or 30-plus panel, it would go to the local LabCorp or Quest and then get back in. But usually, we get results in a pretty quick time too, about 24 hours and. But usually we get results in a pretty quick time too, about 24 hours, and they get uploaded to your portal, you get calls by medical assistants. I mean, this is your dedicated health and wellness center, so.
Yeah, so like lipid panels, all of that. Like the standard things would be pretty fast turnaround.
Yes, yes. This is, you're not competing with a lot of different patient priorities and provider priorities that might happen somewhere else because of the fact that, you know, you have this very dedicated wellness center just, just for your, your school district here. And I think Angela brought this one up, and I only wanted to show this because I showed you on the last iteration what these numbers look like with the least nearby solution. But this really jumps up your return on investment, gets you to your savings a lot faster if you do use repurposed space. You would actually be at a positive ROI before the year is out in year two. So it's estimated to be at 22 and a half month to break even point. And, you know, I think it also spoke to a lot of what you were talking about before is a long-term plan to tackling future expenses. And this tackles that with savings that would be gratified over a whole five-year period.
Will you explain it? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, this, I mean, something that I've said to Patty often is, I love all of this. It's just like, we're also up against, we have a limited pot of dough. So I think for me, for, you know, when we go to vote on this, the thing that I just still kind of need is like, can we, you know, can we do this? You know, does this set us up for the next three years that we're financially okay? I mean, I think if we had unlimited funds, I think we'd all be like, yes, like this sounds amazing. It's just like, can we, like, it's like, you, it's like you need to, like, you need to do this, like, we need to do this. But also, it's going to maybe put a strain on the family budget, so.
Now, are providers also kind of encourage, like, say, I've worked for different companies, okay, everybody does different things, but if there is like a chest pain or something that they need to know, okay, you need to go to the ER. I don't want them to discourage somebody.
No, absolutely. They, they are trained very well on knowing, you know, even for triage purposes, exactly what they need to do. And, and there's been times when ambulance is called and there, off they go, and, and, you know, yes. And then if they have a, especially if you worked in provider clinical areas like that before Chairwoman, they, they have a solution, the providers have, an access to real-time virtual peer-to-peer consults with individuals that are, you know, at the top of the specialty. So I like to give an example of, for example, someone comes in with an odd rash on their arm, they can actually, right there in the clinical appointment with that patient, bring up the dermatologist in a peer-to-peer virtual consult. And actually start talking through, this is what I'm thinking, you know, they're, they're looking, they're viewing, they're taking a picture, or they're viewing virtually. And, and I think that's really super helpful to.
Very.
Give that person, the provider on the other end, you know, an opportunity to say, this is how I feel, how do you feel about it and the protocol that we're handling? And if they need to maybe immediately refer out or what they should do next in the process.
Because I've been on the other side too, where you're thinking about cost and, you know, what's, you know, but you also got to take care of the person.
Right. And you don't want to have a question mark either, you know.
Well, and you're thinking of it from the provider, I'm thinking of it from the person. I mean, the medical field, what's so tough about the medical field, it's not like going to McDonald's and here's my prices, right? It's like, I go, to your point, like, you kind of maybe have a good idea as a provider of what this is going to cost. I remember being 20-something, going, and this provider told me to get all these labs done, and my bill was like $1,200, because they don't say, like, here's the menu. And so this whole like no-cost thing, I don't, if we message it right, I just don't, if we decide to do it, I just don't know, if you could just remove all of that anxiety of like, what's this going to cost me? And then when you're talking about getting other providers on the phone, to not have to then schedule another visit with a dermatologist or whatever, you know, just what keeps going through my mind is, the school system is predominantly female, yes? And, and we do not ever put ourselves first, like, we just don't. And so we have, you know, we, so I mean, this, to me, is such a help specifically for this, I don't want to say industry, what's my word, but for, you know, for this field, right? To really help out, certainly our male employees also, but to help out our female employees to just make this easy, to remove a lot of the anxiety, a lot of the obstacles of getting healthcare, especially for them in addition to their families. So I, this was, this was really beneficial.
Yeah, I think that just lends to, we need to know the needs of our membership, right? Because it's all, so having that, those services that they need, right, is what's most important. Because if we offer things that they're just not, they don't need that, they're not going to see any value in that. So that, that might be something that we learn over time, whatever data we have up front to have the, because when you, when you arrive somewhere and you feel like you got everything, you feel like, wow, thanks, you know, you really thought everything through for me, right? And that's the experience that we need to deliver, whether that, as much, as close as we can out of the gate, and then, you know, as we learn from it. Because there will be learning blocks here, there's no doubt about it, so. Okay, and just one other thing, as far as timeline, so if we decided to move forward with this here, best-case scenario, when are we looking to actually see our first patient?
That's a great, that's a great point. Normally, we would say that you would want at least a four-month implementation time to do it, to do it well. You know, it will work to the effect of whether you're making a choice of the repurposed space or the least nearby space, and, and just how fast we can get the crews, you know, working on it. Our job too, even with either model, is we provide you the good, better, best, like Bob said, and, you know, sample blueprints and how can we do this? And there's teams that we would come out and walk space with you if you're looking at a repurposed space. We'd always suggest the external door, so we're not going through any public areas. I think that was a little discussion point, if you have an external door, do we have ADA compliance? You know, there's, there's requirements involved with it. And if your teams are handling much of that, you know, retrofitting of a existing space, then how much capacity do they have? So maybe if it took a little bit more than four months and you said, but this is the one we want, then that's what we, that's what we do. We also simultaneously work on the recruitment aspects, the marketing aspects, file aspects. There's a lot of things that while crews are building out of space, we're also working on all of these other elements to making your health and wellness center complete for you. But I would just say average is four months. It could be three if we were going like gangbusters, and it could be six if we need a little extra time for the build-out.
So realistically, four to, that's a reasonable expectation, four to six months?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I guess I have one question for Superintendent Moore. I mean, like, as our CEO, if we vote in favor of whatever you guys put before us and we say yes, I would, I would trust that you then have a plan for making sure that reserve fund is good, that we're paying all of our bills, that we're good. So do you, do you have, do you have any worries from an, from an operational standpoint, from you executing your role? Do you have any concerns if we were to approve what is presented before, to us?
I think this process has taken the amount of time that it has because as a staff, we have spent a lot of time looking at, is this affordable? How can this, this be affordable? What options are available to us? So I'm confident that what we're putting before you to vote on is something that we can't afford. It is going, going to take us really, marketing and doing all the things that we've discussed, but I'm confident in what we've put before you right now.
So once you have the approval, you've already done some preliminary, but that's when you would really roll up the sleeves.
And really started to begin to educate.
Put the steps together.
Yes, around, we're going to be doing this, and here are the next steps for that. But we have done, we've spent a lot of time really looking at the financial piece of it a lot of time. And we had to call many times and say, yeah, we, we said we were going to bring it to the board this month, but we're not quite, we still have a lot of questions. And so I appreciate them really sticking with us through this to know that, you know, our, our team that reviewed it, their interest and their support of it, but from a senior staff, we've spent hours and hours and hours.
Because, listen, I, I will be the first to admit, like, I'm not a C-suite person. Apparently my husband shared with me that, anyway, I'll stop. I digress. I am not a C-suite person. So I think, I think after our meeting today, I just kind of come to this place of like, I'm maybe not going to fully understand the puzzle that this is. And so I think for me, I just need to trust that this C-suite does understand the puzzle. And if you feel confident in it, I mean, it sounds, you know, Shannon, I really appreciate everything that you shared today. I mean, it sounds like just even my own care, you know, for thyroid, man, that sounds amazing. So thank you for speaking to that, that, so I am, I am good, for me.
Okay, and I just have one more question. Just looking for other benefits that are kind of outside of our premiums and our, and the care that we're offering. But was there any data in the research that you did that talked about retention and recruitment where this benefited in some way, where they saw that employees were staying longer, they maybe stayed, they stayed in the, the health insurance and not exited it? Or, and also when new employees come on, did they, did that tip the scales for them to come work for the organization?
We did poll our, our current employees to see what their thoughts were after the first, it was, I believe it was in February when we first brought this to you and asked everyone to tune in. We didn't get a ton of responses from that, but every comment on having a wellness center was positive. And we specifically got comments from multiple staff members who have joined us from a neighboring county who had Marathon Everside in their county. And they said it was their single best benefit, and they really, it almost kept them from coming here. So I thought that was telling, and I know it was, that was a small sample of people. But I have seen research around it being a very highly rated employee benefit. And I think you even had some data on your first presentation regarding it being.
I did, I did. When it was placed in Polk County government, or sorry, Polk County Schools recently, I just said recently, it's our longest client, so I meant to say, you know, a decade ago. They had a enormous amount of utilization in the first year at 48%, and I've only modeled for you in the 30s. And another nearby school district, Lake County School District, I solicited them, and they indicated it was 70, 70% utilized. Now, they put some incentives in right out of the gate in order to encourage their membership to use it. And they did admit that of the 70% that used it, this is first year, they said there, that did include some nurse-only appointments where they just had come in for like an initial blood draw or something, or a vaccine, or flu shot, or something of that nature. But touch points, 48% Polk County Schools first year, and 70% first year at Lake County Schools. Those are nearby schools that implemented this. So it, it brought up confidence, I think, even with me, to know if I am offering at a 30% assumption of that, you know, I'm again expecting to just far exceed the expectations of who engages with your center right away.
And I wouldn't minimize those touch points, you know, like, to me, they're all equal.
Exactly.
They're all like really, I mean, whether it's a nurse or a blood draw or whatever.
It was a, a visit of some sort that hit the, the health center.
They're all like really important.
By a unique, I, I also made sure that they isolated two unique individuals, not the same individual coming back, and within the first year of having the center. So that's our job for you is to make sure we work very closely with your teams and do the very best marketing right away in promoting this as a coming soon, really elite benefit that you all are offering here to your membership.
And, but Will, also, the other thing that you brought up, like, I guess I just can, I would think that this helps with engagement. If I'm weighed down, if I'm burdened by, you know, health in addition to everything else, like, I just would think we're going to have, over time, hopefully happier, more engaged employees who, you know, their health, their healthcare is just, has become easier. So, anyway.
If we approve this, will you guys come back to us with like the operational, like, what are the hours going to look like, all that kind of stuff?
I see we would have to come back with frequent updates throughout the process and then.
This building, that building, I mean, a lot of.
Where is it?
This is the incentive plan we, we've hammered out, this is our marketing plan. Yeah, I think it'll be endless.
Lots of communication.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, so, because we are combining a couple of things, the, the other thing that's coming before the board is, and this is not probably as much you, is our percentage that we would be increasing. That's a part of this conversation, correct? Patty, is there, like, in the spirit of, I would love for us just to offer it for free, but we can't because money, do you have like a maximum that, where we are kind of safeguarded from a budget and reserve standpoint of like how much we could give to offset the increase as a board?
Sure, for clarification, and Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, what's coming for votes at the night meeting in two weeks is the clinic, not the insurance rates. Is that correct?
In, insurance renewals are also on it, yes.
Or is that going to? Okay. Is that at the one o'clock as well or no? Because it's on consent right now. So we can figure that out later.
But yes, it is.
To answer your question, Ms. Hahn, based on the financial presentation that I did at the last board meeting, and based on where we are with Esther Grants and where we are with, with our absorbing of positions and our budget this upcoming year, I think it would be fiscally irresponsible for me to recommend anything more than a 5% for the board's contribution.
And can we do a 5%? Or is that, is that even like?
We plan to budget for 5%, which is close to a half million dollars. That is already in the plan for the 24-25 budget.
Okay, so we've budgeted 5% and it would not be fiscally responsible for us to go above that at this point?
Correct.
Which puts the employee increase at 12?
We would have to decide those options. Yeah, there's, those three, four options we have?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're prepared for that piece of it also.
And, and I think.
If they, if, if the board and employees were to do 5%, that's where you can kind of see what the surplus to the reserve, to the minimum reserve would be. The more either party contributes, the more surplus we have to the reserve. So with a repurposed space for the health center, 5% and 5% would be a $900,000 surplus to the minimum amount we need to keep in the reserve. And that reserve would be at 2.7 million. So the 2.7 million in reserve, then we would have a surplus of 900,000 over that safe harbor if you were to do 5% and 5%.
And keep in mind, as we discussed in our earlier meetings, the $900,000 is part of the variable cost that we have no control over. I have seen our claims swing from $500,000 to over a million from one month to the next. It is a very tricky situation to try to get a hold of. I know we have projections, but just as I mentioned in our meetings earlier this afternoon, our projections for this year were off. I did ask Danielle to go back and do some other projections, 5% for the board and increasing the employees, just so we can see what the impact on fund balance is. That is how we have historically always done it, to make sure we preserve our fund balance to, to the extent possible without a massive detrimental cost to the employees.
So these, these projections we're talking about, these are based on actuarial information that we get from Brown &amp; Brown, right?
Based on a rolling 18 months?
Rolling 18 months of the actual claims and then projecting them out.
And then project them out.
Okay.
With a, assuming. With assuming a 7% increase in healthcare costs. It has, does have some assumptions, but in terms of that, those assumptions for funding the plan, it is based on 18 months of claims.
So historically, how much confidence do we have in this, these projections? Just, you know, we're rolling into this here and the projections were not so spot on. But then we're seeing now also though that the fund, we're seeing gains in the positive. That's, that's encouraging, right? But we weren't anticipating that to happen, right? But we're glad it's happening. You know, it's just, my, my biggest concern about this here is kind of what Sally said. Like, I think if we just, if we knew we had all the dollars right now, I mean, we have the dollars, but if we knew that we weren't going to have any unknown expenses pop up that might impact this progress, we'd all be in, I believe. But the concern is, just like when you start a business, you go out there, you lease the space, you put all this money to build it out, right? But then if you run out of money before you finish it and you can start seeing your customers and you never even go into business, and then you lost all that there. So that's my concern, is that, you know, we've got to be able to get there and.
Sustain it.
And sustain it. And that, and it's always that delicate period of time, right in the beginning, where, you know, you're not, you don't see it necessarily right away. You hope there's a line out the door, you know, but that doesn't always happen. And it's just that we're going to make it over that, that hump there, you know?
And I guess the only part I would share is that the only X-factor we have that's on the positive side is actually the, the current trend with the pharmaceutical rebates. And that, none of that is factored into here.
So that's kind of like a contingency million dollars that's out there that.
Right now, yeah. And, and when, if you, if you look at the, the whole slide deck that, that's on Board Docs, you can see last year what was projected and where we ended up. And with the rebates, we ended up just in the green, about $140,000. Sorry, in the black, but yes, green, it's colored green on here. I'm glad you're with me. And when we look at what, how it's trending this year, you know, when we came before you a couple of months ago, we thought we were going to be 10%, you know, kind of behind what was budgeted. And now it's 8%. So it's getting closer to that, you know? So all, all we have are those data to show you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we just, it's, it's, there's no sure things. We just want to make a calculated risk here and, and, and hope that it returns dividends.
I think it's important also for our workforce to understand that the increase is not because we are going with, or the board is considering a health center. That is not why we're having an increase. We're going to have an increase regardless if the board makes this decision or not. Because we don't want people to think, well, they've increased it in order, we have this increase in order for us to have this product. That's not the case. The increase is there regardless.
Yeah, so it's, this is, this is going to happen regardless, but also this is going to hopefully prevent future increases maybe next year. So we're getting ahead of it.
Absolutely, this is a way for us to mitigate what we see in our claims. You know, to have options for our employees to go to a health center to get additional things addressed. We have a great relationship with our current provider. But the reason why we're going in this direction is so that we can increase the opportunities and the different services that we can provide in order to lower what our claims are so that we don't continue to have increases at the rate that we're having right now. So this is really an intervention towards that. That's, that's what it is, right? But I think it's very, that we have to be very clear. If you decide in two weeks that we're not going to do this, this isn't the time, we love all of these things, we're going to wait, the increase is still happening.
Right.
Do we have any?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Not strictly from a legal perspective, but just having seen this implemented across other districts, another way of saying, I think what everybody around the table is saying, is the goal is to make the employees healthier, right? We're trying to do something good for all of our employees and that's what really bends the cost curve because then they don't have to utilize as much high-intensity care. So we're catching, you know, diabetes or these chronic conditions before they really get bad and expensive. And our employees benefit from the convenience and the, and the lowered cost, but also primarily because they're healthier.
Right, that is absolutely.
That is. I think we use the term benefit so loosely that it's really that, it's adding a benefit so that they can be healthier, that they do, they are able to have better time management with going to appointments. They are able to get a comprehensive care opportunity for some of our, our employees that can utilize that route, right? That's not to say, you know, you're not going to have individuals that are going to also have to go to different specialists and all of those things, but it's really to add a benefit to our, our staff.
Yeah, and I think that's, not to be offensive, but I think that's something that has been missed a little bit here, is not maybe meeting employees where they are. Life is, I keep bringing this up, but it's true. I mean, life is hectic. So if, during open enrollment, I'm, like, when I am stressed out figuring out which tiers and, and that's when you're providing me on page 800 with the, then it's not a benefit because I don't, I don't know about it. And yeah, maybe it's, it's in, on a website page somewhere, or it was in that 800-page packet. But if I don't truly, communication is two ways, right? It's, it's both given and received, right? And so I think that's probably the biggest thing, is maybe changing up. And that's, I know I'm getting into operations, but I mean, I'm just speaking from personal experience. It's like, until Shannon really, until I went, oh, my thyroid, like, until I really understood it, which just happened just now, this would not have been a benefit for me because I wouldn't have really understood what this was. I just had a quick follow-up question. Is there anything union-wise, bargaining-wise, like we had a year and a half ago, that could come up again, like a promise of a refund? Or like, is there, is there any of that in the mix that we need to think about?
Well, I would think that all the mechanics of this, the, how, that's going to be the next conversation. Like, if we decide to approve this, then we, then we have to go and, and then we have to meet and how this, they're going to bring back suggestions to us on that.
Just a first-year, like, approval.
And then we're going to give our feed, we're going to, we're going to give our feedback based on what they bring to us on, on whether there's incentives and what they look like and what our hours are going to be and all that.
But you know what I'm saying?
And it goes back to our buckets, our buckets of funds, right? When we start bargaining, we've already started some of that work already. It's identifying of these dollars, you know, helping individuals to understand, like, where are the dollars, you know, for my, my raise and where are the dollars for this or that? You know, those are always going to be conversations, but at the end of the day, our CFO is going to present, here are all the dollars that we have. Now, we, as an organization, including through the bargaining process, we identify, how can we utilize those dollars to meet the operational needs of the organization as well as provide any financial updates or financial increases to our employees? And so really identifying, here are, here are the dollars, all right? Here are the dollars that it will take to do these portions. Here's what left, here's what's left. How do we utilize those dollars in order to, to again add benefits?
It's a communication piece, because that's just as you're talking.
So it's always going to come up.
No, totally.
But it comes up, that's why compensation and benefits and all of those things are a part of our collective, you know, bargaining agreement. It impacts their.
The narrative, like, because when you say 900,000 and what, you know, that, that's when our employees go, well, I, like, that shouldn't just be sitting there, right? Like, I, like, I, I want a part of that. And so to me, that's just a, that union bargaining piece is just something that.
It's always going to be a conversation, you know? That's why compensation is addressed each time. And we'll, you know, we'll identify and we'll be transparent and we'll come to an agreement as to what this will look like for our employees.
And the organization, which is, which is the dance, right? Like, making sure, they're taken care of, but making sure that the organization is, is on solid footing, so, okay.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
This was great.
We have just 11.02.
Those are personnel, that standard order personnel items. Bob was leaving, so I'll, I'll do the update. Of course, you know that these will continue to change.
And this is the first look, yes, in preparation for the board meeting.
All right, any, any questions about personnel items?
And as we continue to move with wrapping this year up, we will begin to see additional things for individuals who are retiring, individuals who have resigned.
We just completed that survey. We've got stragglers, we always have stragglers. But the vast majority of the workforce has kind of shared their intent, whether they're going to stay with us or retire or, you know, move on. So those are all being used as part of the staffing decisions that are, that are being made as we get ready for next year.
I thought that the email that went out better reflected the appreciation we have for our staff compared to last year. So I was, I was happy to see.
Thank you.
That, that was an improvement.
HR tries to be a learning organization.
So I appreciate that.
We want you to say, we value not tell us if you're staying or not. So thank you for that feedback and I'm glad we were able to learn from that.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. All right, so we will move on now down to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay, is anybody that would like to come forward? Seeing no one, then we will close public comment. And now board member requests. Are there any board member requests today?
I have just something really small. Last year at this time, there was a whole thing about graduation rates. I feel like we're kind of, beginning of April, we're kind of right here that I want to ask the question. Are there, like, are the high schools set up for, I know Matanzas, I think, did a really great job last year of kind of having, like, hyper-focused, you know what I'm saying? I just, I just wanted to check in with you on graduation rates.
We will provide that update at the next board meeting under our spotlight. For clarification, you, this is when we provided an update as to, here are the students that we, that have met all of their requirements and are ready to go. And here's the bucket of students that we're still actively working on to help them get to the finish line.
Do you anticipate any surprises? Are we going to be making like bad news or are things?
We'll provide, yeah, we'll provide that update, yeah. I'm what that is.
All right.
Yes, no.
Hey, man, I just want enough lead time because it's already April 2nd. So it's like, this is kind of the.
But our teams have been working on this all year long to identify. We have some additional options that the state of Florida allowed for us to use with the, now my, the CLT. The C is going to escape me, comprehensive learning or conservative learning. CLT assessment allows for, I'm sorry, my, my words are not coming easily today. But our, our teams have been really working on that, making sure that we're providing our students additional opportunity because it's typically the students who have not yet passed all of their assessments. But I will provide that update at the next.
Yeah, because it, was it last year that was like the whole algebra thing or they raised the?
That was the one year, the year before, I'm pretty sure it was.
There was like a spec, like a certain specific thing that was happening?
Yes, we will address that.
Awesome. It's like, I know you, you know, you're probably thinking about things like graduation rates.
Oh, we're definitely looking at it.
All right, thank you.
Hey, closing comments. Anybody have any closing comments today?
I do have one. We got great news today. I don't know if Don's already shared it with social media. We got notified from the state of Florida that James Sorrentino, our employee of the year, is in the top five finalists for the state.
Ooh.
So we're super excited for, for Flagler Schools, super excited for him. And next week is, the timeline is looking that maybe on next week we will find out from the commissioner of education who the, the final finalist is. But Mr. Sorrentino is a finalist, he's a top five finalist. We're so proud of him and excited for him. And I'm sure he's celebrating right now. And I know that his students are going to be excited to see him on tomorrow at Buddy Taylor Middle School.
Do they win something really awesome?
Well, they're, they get some professional learning, they get a great opportunity beyond the wall, and they do get financial incentive as well.
We had a.
Which is great, especially for our support staff. It happens on our, our teacher's side as well, but yes.
We had a custodial, didn't we, didn't he, wasn't he like number one in the state? Or did he, was he a finalist?
Mr., that was also.
Was he at RIM finals?
Yes, Ron Carly from Buddy Taylor Middle School.
Oh, Buddy Taylor.
He was number one in the state for.
It was a custodial.
Custodial, yeah, for a custodial, um, of, of.
Separate competition.
Oh, it was, oh, okay.
Yes.
I'm just, you know, Flagler Schools, just excellent.
Flagler Forward.
Flagler Forward, thank you for sharing.
All right, thanks for that, Superintendent Moore.
Happy 141st.
Oh, Dr. Paul, is she, is she still on?
I think she's, I think she's on, okay. Please remind her. All right, this meeting is adjourned.